Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'll ask Pastor Fair if he's in attendance. There he is. Leads us in our prayer. Right from my prayer, we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, we do thank you so much for today and just the blessings of life that you've given us. God, we thank you for this city that we live in. We thank you for being here and just having breath in our lungs tonight. And God, I ask that you remind us of our blessings. God, so many times in life, we take you for granted in the things that we've been given. But God, I pray that tonight, we reflect on that. And God, that we speak and we think in a manner that is pleasing and acceptable in your sight. And God, give us the will for our lives to do the things that you've called us to do. God, we thank you again. I ask a special blessing upon every person here as they travel to their homes tonight. And we ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Swan, call roll, please.
President Logan.
Here.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Sims.
Here.
Councilman Harper.
Here.
Have a form, Mr. President.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to recognize some citizen servants who helped make our city and other cities great and those who give their time and volunteer to be on planning boards, subdivision boards, boards of adjustment. This is a job without pay. Sometimes, it's a job that will get you fussed at, but they still show up and they still make decisions for the betterment of our city. And I'm going to, right now, ask anybody that's involved with the Northport Planning and Zoning Commission or the Northport Zoning Board of Adjustment to please come up here with me. If you're a current member, please come right on up. Scott, if you'll come up also. Our planning director, Scott Stevens. What I'm going to do, I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'm going to call out the names. If they're here, they'll get their copy of the proclamation. If they're not, I'm going to give them to Director Stevens at the planning department here. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, counties, and other places. And whereas community planning can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningful, involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Northport Planning and Zoning Commission and Northport Zoning Board of Adjustment and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Northport. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the Northport Planning and Zoning Commission and Zoning Board of Adjustment and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these citizens. Now therefore, I, Bobby Herndon, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the great city of Northport, Alabama, to hereby proclaim October 2016 to be Community Planning Month in the city of Northport and express our appreciation for their contributions to our community. Let's give them all a hand. I know I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission many years ago and I know the hard work and dedication it takes for each one of you. So I'm going to call the names out. If you're here, I want to present this to you. It's just like a diploma, graduating from school and things like that. James McKinney. James is not here. Okay. Patrick Swan. Shaun Blackburn. Shaun, thank you so much for your service, man. Appreciate it. Tracy Kelly. Bruce Higginbotham. Brian Wisoc. Brian, thank you for everything, man. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Aubrey Dell. Hey, I appreciate you, man. Julie Ram. Julie was here. And Rodney Sullivan. Rodney, thank you for your service, man. All right, from our planning, from our Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have Susan Rue. Susan, thank you so much. Jeff Thompson. Appreciate you, man. Thanks for your service. John Garner. Jeff Hogg. Yep. Thank you, man. And then we have Alfred Rice. Jason Ward. And Ms. Flor Gay. And I don't say Flor either. Let's give them all one more good hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next presentation is Show Your Blue. Show Your Blue Northport, Captain Carpenter.
Good evening. I just want to say how blessed I feel to be a police officer in the city of Northport and the support that the community has shown us. And then this is a group, I'd like to ask Casey Johnson and Tamara Allen to come up front, please. Show Your Blue was a movement that these ladies were involved with where they sold ribbons that went on the mailboxes in neighborhoods to show their support for us as a police department. And for doing that, they've raised enough money for us to purchase a couple of ballistic shields which are, will be real similar to this, which will give us extra protection when we're out working streets. If we go on calls where there's somebody who's armed, to try to protect the officers and keep them safe and help them to go home. And I want to present a challenge for each one of them. And I'll give them the opportunity to talk about Show Your Blue Northport.
Okay, okay. It's a very cool agenda, so we will speak very quickly. Tamara and I are neighbors and close friends and she had this idea to support our local law enforcement and their families because we feel like the law enforcement and their families send them out every day not knowing what they are going to encounter when they're out there. She put it out as a simple Facebook post and it spread like wildfire, like you would not believe. We started it in Grand Point, which is our neighborhood, and immediately after she put the Facebook post out there, it just, she started getting requests for ribbons. So we had to get help very quickly. And so we were able to get Kablooms, which is a local florist here in town, to help us. We were contacted by other neighborhoods to get behind it. And I think that this sent a very powerful message on behalf of our community that we are behind our law enforcement and not only our law enforcement, but their families. And, you know, they really emulate the service above self mentality when they go out and about every day, when they do their jobs. And, you know, we all know the power of social media, good and bad. And this is the power of social media for the good. This was able to really give us an opportunity to come together as a community and support our officers. And because of that, we've been able to purchase these shields. And it's really, really cool to go through our neighborhood and see those. We had some people that were in this week and they said to us, well, it was really nice of you to welcome all these Kentucky fans to town. And that is not the case. Not the case at all. And so we've been, we've just been really excited to be able to have that. And Tamara and I are just really blessed by the friendships and the relationships that we have been able to find in our neighborhood, but also the ones that we've been able to build in our neighborhood as well. And we thank you, guys, for the things that you do every single day that we don't ever see. Because we do, we know that you guys still are doing it.
Hey, 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 guys, come on around. Come on around so we can see. Let's get a picture.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item six are visitors to address the city council, Ms. Latrissa Thompson, to discuss Jones Road. Ms. Thompson. Good evening, come on up. Turn that mic around. Yeah, just turn it around to you. Good evening. State your name and address for the record, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening. I'm Latrissa Thompson. I live on 10455 Jones Road in Northport. And I'd like to thank you all for letting me come into this afternoon. It's really an honor to be here. But I'm speaking on behalf of the residents on Jones Road and the adjoining roads. We, it's been, the neighborhood has been developed there for over forty or fifty years. And we're city and county. And we're asking to have the road paved. I'm aware that there's other people that have come before the city council to ask to, if we could get the road paved. And there was some kind of disagreement somewhere saying that there was people that wasn't interested in having it paved. But I do have a list of the neighbors there on their adjoining roads and that are in agreement to having it paved. It is a health hazard, not only to us, but to the city employees that comes up through there, the garbage people, the people that are trying to keep the road, keep it clean up there for us. But it's, it's really come to the time that something needs to be done about the pavement on that road. And we are taxpayers and we need to have something done. And if I, if you'd like, I can give you a list of everyone that I have gotten to sign and that are in agreement with it. But I felt like it was my duty to come before you all today to address it.
Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, but hasn't the problem always been we couldn't, nobody was wanting to give up right of way up through there as far as paving that road?
Yes, so that, in the past, that's been the primary problem. We had residents that were willing to give right of way for Jones Road and those that were not willing to do that. So that has been the primary issue, Mayor, with, with getting the road paved.
Well, before coming here today, I did get a list of the residents up there and I got the signatures of everyone up there that is in agreement. I don't, I mean, I didn't come.
Sure.
Meet one, not one person that wasn't in agreement.
Right.
And there was, I've heard that in the past and one of the councilmen's that was running, campaigning up there, that way, they said the same thing, that there was one or two people that didn't want to have it paid.
Are any of those on the list that signed to be in agreement this time?
Yes.
Do you think they've been in agreement of dedicating some right of way to the, to the city?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that, we'd love to look at that.
Do I bring it to you?
Just bring it here. Make copies of this. Do you need these? Is all copies? You're awesome.
Good deal.
Give me two more. Allison, we can look at this and get staff to see, get a map of all the owners and see who all is on there and maybe we can contact them and see about the right of way issue. We'd be happy to revisit that and see what we can do. We can, we can start mapping it out and investigating it, you know, immediately. But then if somebody wants to drag their feet as far as dedicating right of way, that might require a more lengthy time period. But yeah, anything we can do to help, we want to, if we have permission to do it. And so, yeah, we'd be happy to look at that. Well, and don't give up now.
Let me, let me, will you be the main point of contact?
Yeah.
Charles, can you get, can you get Ms. Thompson's number? That way, if you're going to speak on, I guess it's twenty-one signatures and like Mayor Herndon said, it really will come down to the resident saying, yes, I want the project, but I have to go through the dedication process to say, I will dedicate X amount of footage to get this project done. So we got to have that kind of support. Okay. And, and Ms. Thompson, you be the main point of contact and give Charles your number. Staff will start the mapping process like Mayor Herndon said, and then from there, residents need to kind of push real hard to say, hey, I'm going to dedicate my right of way for this project to happen. Mr. Swan's office. Yes.
He's available twenty-four hours a day, so just call him.
One o'clock in the morning, if you, if you're getting off of shift work, you just ring the phone.
And may I get your number?
Thank you.
Thompson, put my phone number on there, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you. A second visitor, Mr. Jimmy Holloman.
Appreciate y'all letting me be here again tonight. I just wanted to ask y'all again to reconsider selling alcohol at Kentuck Park. If you would, put it back up to a vote again. I think there were three councilmen here that voted it in. So we, is that right? So we need to, everybody's here tonight. Why not re-vote on it again? It's not just the sale of alcohol. Like the ladies that were supporting the police, they had them babies there. And I believe we might have had this discussion. Man have too many beers. He gets his car, he backs over one of the kids because he don't react quick enough. Things happen. I mean, we've got a plan for them. Brother back here showed me on his phone, he pulled it up a while ago. If you weigh a hundred and twenty pounds and you drank two beers, you're legally drunk if you're commercial driving. That's two beers. How many beers are there going to be allowed to drink? Plus, if I was a beer drinker, which I'm not, and I was sitting over there in the lounge here, I could be giving a guy ten dollars all the time, him going to get me a beer and him, somebody else would get it. There's no way to regulate it. No way to regulate it. I got four hundred and seventy-nine names protesting right here.
Got a copy, Jimmy, or you may get?
Appreciate it. If y'all would, put it up to a revote. When we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, it said, "One nation, under God." And I believe that God's name is Jehovah, God, Lord God Almighty. He's in control of all this. If we want to make this country great again, and you see election signs out saying, "Make America Great Again," we're going to have to get back down on our knees and worship the Lord God Almighty. We're going to have to take a stand. That's why I'm here tonight, because the Lord convicted me of it and I've been praying that He would convict each and every one here tonight. If y'all would re-vote on that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you. Next visitor is Ms. Amy Echols.
Good evening. My name is Amy Echols. I live at fourteen oh seven River Road Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, three five four oh six. Tonight, I'm here like I've been here the last two years. It is the city council meeting before the Kentuck Art Festival. And I just want to always take this opportunity to come and thank you guys. You know, something I didn't plan on speaking to, though, is we've got our clock working in downtown Northport and I know you guys are to thank for that. So that's really exciting. Our lamp posts have been repainted this year. Y'all pressure washed the streets down there, so thank you for what you're doing for downtown Northport. And for the festival, this is our forty-fifth year. We get money from members. We have two hundred and fifty members who actually support us financially. We have, but of course, we couldn't do what we do with just members. We have grants that we receive every year, thanks to the renovation of the building. I think that's really helped increase that grant by a couple of thousand dollars from the State Arts Council this year, which is exciting, but we couldn't do it with just grants. We also sell corporate sponsorships for our festival every year. But that alone could not make Kentuck what it is. It's this city of Northport who continually supports us for the last forty-five years and that is just phenomenal. So what we do at the festival is we always try to add things that are new to make the cultural experience for the city, this area, this state, and this region, as good as it's always been. Because we are one of the top cultural events in this state and we make over a five million dollar economic impact to this area. So this year, some of the things that we're adding new, we used to have two music stages. Well, now we have a stage that is called the Spoken Word and you may even see some actors and actresses, you know, walking through the park during the festival. So we have storytelling and the spoken word is very popular now, so we have added that to our festival. We have someone that's donated a car and our artists are going to paint the car at the festival, so the art car is going to be born there. We have things like, we're hoping to have craft beer, which is something that we think will move this forward in a positive way. And we have increased our artists that come from all over the United States to Northport. They actually come early. We have sixteen, seventeen artists this year that come early and go to our city schools and our county schools as well, which also help to continue to make this into the cultural event that it is every year. So I'm just here to say thank you very much and I appreciate all you do for Kentuck.
Thank you, Amy, and all visitors. Item seven A one is a second reading of an ordinance, ladies and gentlemen, annexing zero point seven five acres located at four one zero four Forty-third Street. Mr. Stevens, again, this is going before your planning and zoning had a favorable recommendation. It's just a second reading of such. So, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance annexing point seven five acres located at four one zero four Forty-third Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item eight A one, new business. It's a first reading of an ordinance amending commercial building permit fees. Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir. The state of Alabama passed legislation creating the construction industry craft training program and the craft training board. That's a, gonna be a state, state administered program. However, it's going to be funded through fees collected at the local level. The fee structure will be tacked onto commercial building permits or non-residential building permits at the rate of one dollar per each thousand dollar of valuation of the project. So for a million dollar project, which here in Northport would be pretty large, that'd be an extra thousand dollars in addition to the fees we charge. And the cities will be sending that fee to the state.
Thank you.
Yeah, the proposal before you is to, to increase our fees by one dollar per thousand.
Thank you. And again, I know I stated in the, in the pre-meeting, this is an unfunded state mandate. Again, state legislator, legislative body actually passed the bill and Governor Bentley signed this one. Again, most cities have already started doing it. We also have the league municipalities giving us some direction in making sure that this is passed because it's a state law, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I'll offer that for a first reading. Next item is a resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with Dr. William E. Crawford, M.D., Chief Marshall.
Yes, sir. The state requires us to have a medical director for any agency that provides advanced life care, meaning our paramedic services, and this will meet the requirements of the state. And it was budgeted for two thousand and sixteen.
All right, thank you. And again, Dr. Crawford's been, been with our fire and rescue for quite some time, for a number of years. Anyway, this is just re-authorizing basically a service that Dr. Crawford is already doing. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with Dr. William E. Crawford, M.D., to serve as medical director as required by Rule Number four two zero dash two dash one dash point zero five five and H, and authorizing the city administrator's office to approve the purchase requisition not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Is that, is that right, Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Second item is a awarding the bid for the water treatment building improvement project. This is a rebid. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, earlier this year, we had bid a project to do some renovations to the operations building at the water plant, primarily focused on the roof, attic space, HVAC, and electrical lighting. That bidder had some issues on their bid that resulted in them proposing a change order prior to us executing the contracts and we went through the process to reject that bid and rebid. This rebid was performed and we had three bidders. The low bidder meeting, the criteria was NC Morgan Construction with a low bid with alternate of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred. As a point of reference, with the proposed change order on the previous bid, it would have resulted in a total contract of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four seventy-five, which the rebid results in about a net savings of approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars. What we have before you tonight is a resolution awarding the bid to NC Morgan and allowing the city administrator to execute contracts to move forward with the project.
Thank you. And of course, in the pre-meeting, I did ask the question that we were comfortable with the liquidated damages to kind of keep the data completion on, on task.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution awarding the rebid for water treatment building improvement project to NC Morgan Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars and to authorize our city administrator to execute the necessary documents and requisitions needed to proceed with the project. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a second, my Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item three is a resolution authorizing our Northport Police Department to apply for a twenty sixteen Homeland Security Grant. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President. This would allow and authorize the police department to apply for a grant. The grant would be in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. It would go toward the purchase of a mobile command center. It would go toward the purchase of a mobile command center. The, uh, total price of that center is right around eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, with the twenty-five thousand dollar grant, that would leave a balance, the city would pay of sixty-three thousand five hundred. What this does is, uh, would be submitted with the grant indicating that had, if the grant is given, the city would pay the balance to allow for the purchase of this, uh, mobile command center, uh, for use by the Northport Police Department.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Move to approve.
Thank you, that's a motion by councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilman Sims. Any questions or comments?
One comment on this item, Mr. President, um, just so everyone knows, if, if, uh, the grant is not awarded, then we will go back to square one. Um, would, we would, would, excuse me, we would be left with a full ninety thousand dollar bill, so, um, if the grant's not awarded, then we'll come back to the table and look at other options. Just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is consent agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we have nine items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training, uh, P O requisitions, of course, and two ones to note, uh, two P O requisitions for Shirley Place, uh, that we asked at last pre-meeting and last council meeting for staff to get us some prices, and they have done so, uh, for mold remediation, and of course, porch repair. Again, these are nine items for council consideration. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you, that's a motion by councilman Harper, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilwoman Hayes. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you, item nine is reports of special committees to council, we have none to report tonight. Uh, item ten is public hearings, we have none on the docket. Item eleven, city administrator's business, Mr. Swan.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, I only have one item, uh, make an announcement that the council will have a special meeting on October the eleventh at noon, uh, to canvass the votes for the election, runoff election.
Alright, thank you. Uh, item twelve is, uh, police department business, we have one item. It's a, uh, ABC license for J S Bartending LLC doing businesses, or doing business as for the Kentuck Festival Art Show twenty sixteen. Um, I know we had a couple, couple people speak, but I think we have someone from the police department, think, if carpenter, or if not.
Chief Foster.
Oh, Chief Foster, thank you, chief.
Yeah, I could find nothing in this, uh, background to prevent him from selling alcohol.
Alright.
Background check.
Mr. Davis, can you run through one, one more time as far as the requirement and everything to make sure we?
Yes, Mr. President, this, uh, this has been on the agenda for about three times. This, uh, the, uh, ordinance has been changed to allow, uh, a private entity to request the city council to allow it to, um, serve alcoholic beverages for a private event. It's a one-time waiver, uh, for example, in this instance, uh, Kentuck has requested to be allowed to sell craft beer during a certain period of time on Saturday and a certain period of time on Sunday afternoon. That's all they would be allowed to sell, uh, next year, if, uh, they feel this was successful and they wish to come back and ask the council to do it, they would have to come back and do it again next year. So this would be an effective test run to see how well it works for Kentuck and for the city. Only for this one, one event at this one time under the very, uh, if, and, and tight restrictions that are requested, plus they have to comply with all city laws, ABC laws, et cetera.
Alright, thank you.
Can I ask him a question? I'd like to ask him a question, please.
The applicant? Ms. Hayes, I?
Uh, Ron.
Okay, Ron, uh, councilwoman Hayes has requested, she wants to ask a question.
Excuse me, can you tell us where liability, uh, stands in, insofar as any type of, um, accident, tragic accident, who has a liability? Will the city be involved?
It would depend upon the circumstances of the accident, but the city is covered by liability insurance, as Kentuck is as well. And, and, and as is the applicant.
Councilwoman, you have any, anything else?
Thank you, Ron.
Alright. Is there a motion to approve the ABC license for J S Bartending LLC for the Kentuck Festival Art Show twenty sixteen?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you, that's a motion by councilman Harper, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
No.
Councilman Sims. President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item thirteen is public comment. We have two citizens signed up to speak. Ms. Tameria Madison. Good evening.
Good evening, I know we want to get home and get ready for this election on tomorrow, but I wanted to step up to be kind of proactive. I'm Tameria Madison, I live at forty-four twelve Northwood Lake Drive, west in Northport, Alabama. Uh, the reason I came up tonight is because me and some other citizens attended the civil service board interviewing for the city administrator, and I know that they're gonna give you the three candidates, and it's gonna be up to the council and the mayor, or the new people that are elected, but I, I wanted to be proactive and ask you all to really consider that the newspaper published that there was ten candidates. We interviewed, well, we observed them interview seven people. Six of those people were on the ten people that were listed in the newspaper, one was not. Out of the people that were interviewed, there was five that was from Washington, Florida, um, quite a few from Georgia, but when they asked them about what they knew about Northport, to hear them say they just knew what they saw on the internet, it was kind of disheartening that we even were considering, out of thirty-nine applicants, to bring someone in that only thing they knew about Northport was what they saw on the internet. Now, they did interview individuals, one was a resident of Tuscaloosa County, that, that was good, that was good to know, he works in Beale County and he has some experience. And there was another one from Birmingham who had interviewed for the job about eight years ago, and he visits Northport, he rides around, he has experience, but the reason I want to talk to you all is so you can maybe get those thirty-nine applicants again, and maybe see if we have any more that live in Tuscaloosa County or that are familiar with Tuscaloosa other than the internet. This is a serious position, and to have individuals come in and put them over our city is disheartening. And I, I really don't want to go there tonight, but as a African American, to see that there was only one African American that was interviewed, you, you, you know, this is my community, and i- it feels kind of good when I can sit up and see a female on the council, an African American, just diversity. And I hope we would consider that when we, you know, give someone that job as a city administrator. So I, I just wanted to be proactive and ask you all, when you get the three candidates, maybe ask them to show you those other applicants that had applied, and maybe we should consider not going outside of the state of Alabama to bring that administrator in, and so that's why I came up tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Our next citizen is Harold Witt. Good evening.
Well, I'm a citizen of Northport, yes, many here are, I think. I have some questions I wanted to ask about the alcohol sales at Kentuck. It's been on my mind, and I think I, I need, many of the people in Northport need an answer, I think. I've had to talk to a lot of people. I understand that Northport finances are very good, better than they've been in years, is that right, brother Bobby?
Yes, sir.
And we don't need the money, do we? Why, why, why did we, just a question, I need an answer. Why do we need alcohol sales at Kentuck? That's a question. Why? It's been going well, right, up until this time, and I hope it continues, but things have been going well at Kentuck. I think y'all agree with me. So what is the advantage of alcohol sales if it's not on, considering modern tariffs? Reason, I mean, it has to be some reason, and I, I can answer, I, I think we ought to put in the paper while you're doing it. Why we've decided to say, I think that the council should have thought about that, because I think if, most of the people in Northport would say no. And I think we ought to go along with what the people think. I think if the people had a chance to vote, like you, I think we'd vote no. Right? I think the people would vote no. You might say, no, they're, they're for it, but, uh, I just like that question answered, and maybe you can run in the paper, we run, uh, some things in the paper a lot of the time about finances are good, but we, we need an answer why we are going to, uh, allow that, because you know.
Sir, could, do you mind if I ask you, do, do you know when Northport allowed alcohol sales, period?
Do what?
Do you know when Northport allowed alcohol sales, period? When they became wet, what year that was? Do you know what year that was?
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear too well.
Do you know when Northport went wet, the city, and allowed alcohol sales, period?
Well, I understand that, but do we have to do that?
No, I'm a, I'm asking the question. He said, I'm presuming that Northport had a vote on it.
If we took a vote, if people said allow alcohol sales, see, we got a lot of children out there. Now, I think we had, not long, too many years back, I can't remember, I hadn't lived here that long, about eight or nine years, but Bobby, I think we had somebody that got injured or got killed because of somebody drinking alcohol. I just want to ask you a question, now this is personal, I mean, I don't want to stay out of place here, but if you had a child, or a grandchild, or great-grandchild, or even your wife that was leaving Kentuck, and a person had been drinking alcohol too much, some do, you know that, and you, they got killed, how would you feel? You say, well, I'm sorry that happened? No, you wouldn't feel that way, you say, that person should not have been drinking. My wife or thy child would not have got killed. Now, you gotta think about that, it's something more important than money. Most things are wrapped around money, you know that. And, uh, I, uh, I just feel like, uh, that you, uh, that it's the wrong thing to do, and, uh, like Brother Jimmy said here, uh, a while ago, I think we're gonna be hell for caliber. Now, we, we got, I know, polit, y'all are in politics, I've never been a politician, but you make decisions based on what's best for the people, right? Answer, is that right, brother Bobby? What is bu, best for the people? Now, the, the majority usually wins, we know that. The minority usually wins, and the majority loses, but I think it, I tell you what, folks, it needs to start on a local basis. We know what's going on in the Supreme Court right now. You say, well, that's not right, that's something much larger. But we got things right here in Northport, we ought to consider based on what is right and what is wrong. Amen? What is right and what is wrong. Now, you might not agree with me on this, but I want to speak my piece on it, and I, uh, I don't think I'm out of place in saying this, but I think that the council made a decision, and you got a lot of people, it's gonna be voting later on for people to run, be in positions here at the council years down the road. And this might not just be temporary, it might be a permanent thing right now, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Witt. Item fourteen is mayor and council members' business, I'll start with District One, councilwoman Hayes.
Well, I believe that the citizens in District One are gonna be very disappointed that they probably will not get a rebate on their, um, on their water and sewer bill. And, um, but, and also, I, I think we're gonna have a really good turnout tomorrow of residents since District One, they're really encouraged by the election, and we'll, uh, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, councilwoman, I will echo those same, uh, sentiments. I encourage everybody in, uh, District Two to come out and vote. Please exercise your right to vote tomorrow. Also, October ninth, that's on a Sunday from two to four, uh, the West Alabama Heritage Learning Center, it's at the corner of Tenth Street and Main Avenue. They're gonna have a open house from, that's this Sunday, well, October ninth from two to four. Uh, they'll have an open house, you can kind of see that new facility and take part in that. Uh, October twentieth, here at Northport City Hall, or the Civic Center area, at three P M, the Tuscaloosa County Civic Hall of Fame will be inducting six new honorees, if you've seen that in the paper. So, you know, we ask the public to maybe come out and support those six individuals who have, uh, got this great award, they're gonna be inducted into the Tuscaloosa County Civic Hall of Fame. So again, I encourage everybody to vote tomorrow, exercise your right, uh, polls will be open, and go by and get your sticker and, and make sure your vote is counted. So that's all the business under my, in my district. Uh, councilman Sullivan.
Um, just real quick, um, I know you've heard us, uh, recently say, uh, Chief Foster or Chief Carpenter. Chief Carpenter, where you at? Come back in here, can't hide. Um, the reason they're now both referred to as chiefs, they were both recently promoted to assistant chiefs. We have two assistant chiefs in the department now, um, assistant chief carpenters over administration and foster over patrol and, uh, traffic, so certainly want to congratulate them, so let's give them a big hand up. And this was really when we met in our Public Safety Committee, um, one of the things that Chief Burton had brought up, um, kind of going back to the way it used to be, so, um, that's what was done, very proud of those two officers, they've done a great job, and, uh, um, okay, I'll do, and the reason they're, uh, uh, right now, acting chief is Chief Foster. Um, Chief Burton, right now, is at the FBI Academy in, uh, Quantico, Virginia. It's a twelve-week program, he got selected to go to, so very proud of him, um, to get to go do that, and it's certainly a, uh, a, a good thing for the city to have that knowledge to come back here, so, uh, thanks to both y'all, I just want to recognize both y'all, um, tonight.
If it pleases mayor and council, I need to do one administrative thing under my business, if it's our mayor and council, I need to jump back. I wanted to, um, in some of our talks with, uh, personnel committee and staff, uh, I wanted to make sure that we do have a couple department heads that we need to go through the internal process to make interim at some point, uh, one being finance director and one being planning. Uh, if it pleases mayor and council, I would like to make a motion to charge our H R department to internally post the position of finance director internally, and the position of planning director internally for one week, and go through that process. So again, that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilwoman Hayes. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I apologize for jumping and, and did not.
I was almost through. I got about ten more minutes. I'm just kidding, no, that is it. Uh, during our public safety meeting, we did go through, uh, uh, the police budget and fire budget uh, very intensely with, with April, certainly appreciate your help and your time. We spent many, many hours going through that, and, uh, looked pretty good. Um, that, the biggest change out of our meeting was, like I said, the, the appointment of two assistant chiefs, so, uh, we had a great meeting, look forward to the next one, so, uh, we're, we're moving along just fine. Um, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Uh, District Four, councilman Sims.
I have nothing, thank you.
District Five, councilman Harper.
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon.
Well, as always, I want to thank the staff, uh, all the employees of the city of Northport for the, the great job that they do. You know, I got in my hand here what, um, almost five hundred, I'm sitting here counting them, almost five hundred signatures, and I think it would be remiss on my part if I didn't at least, uh, ask if the council wanted to reconsider their vote because of the turnout against the Sunday alcohol, the, the sales at Kentuck. I just wanted to bring that up, there is, and most of these are citizens of the city of Northport. I know a lot of them, but, um, I just, of the council. but, um, I just, if the council wanted to act on that.
I do, Bobby.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I was, I was, I was, um, agreeing with Mayor Herndon.
Well, that'd be definitely up to the, uh, council if they wish to, uh, reconsider the actual vote, meaning not just this one, but the previous ones. Uh, again, uh, based on the Roberts Rule, you would have to bring it back up, but looking at the vote, I'm not gonna guess at it, but I will just make the assumption that it'll probably be the same vote, I'm assuming. But, again, that'd be up to, uh, council to make another motion.
That's all I'm asking, President Logan, is just if, if the council, if, if, if they do want to open up, just because of the response, that'd be up to the council.
Alright, floor is open.
I, I'll be opposition, um, I don't have a problem with the craft beer. When I take my nine-year-old daughter to Applebee's or Billy's, they have full bars, but I don't buy her a drink and allow her to drink. And we could be leaving there in an accident, it's just that, something that you don't plan on happening. So, I don't have a problem with the craft beer, if you don't want to drink it, you don't have to buy it. But to say, you know, not to, you know, patronize Kentucky Park because they're gonna have craft beer, is some kids that their parents sit at home and drink and fall out in front of them, so what's the difference? I mean, it's about a personal responsibility, I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Yes, sir, state your name and address for the record.
Jerry Skinner, eight forty-one Islemay Drive, Northport, Alabama. I have a problem with it, the last time I was here, uh, Ms. Eccle stood up here and told us that, uh, y'all had professional bartenders, I think, that were gonna serve beer, and they would not over-serve. That's ridiculous, there's no way that you can tell me that you will not over-serve beer to somebody who wants it. If they want it, they gonna come get it. She also said that, uh, this was a special beer, a, a special brew of beer, I, I don't know anything about beer, I don't drink it. But, uh, unless it does not make you drunk, it's not special enough for me. She also said that it was, uh, it was not about money, that the s- the city or the, the Kentucky Festival would probably lose money. Is, uh, that's what she said. Now, I don't believe that, but if, if that be the case, then why sell it? If you're gonna lose money, why do it? I just do not understand, i- if you think that it's gonna bring more people in, it's probably not, because five hundred people have signed these petitions saying, don't do it, and, uh, and so, we're not coming. If you're gonna sell beer, we're gonna stay away, and I'd ask everybody else to stay away. Uh, that's the only way I know for us to, to put a stop to it, is just don't do it. I, I don't understand, you guys, maybe y'all all drink beer, I don't know, but we don't want our children exposed to it, we don't want our grandchildren exposed to it. I think you need to take it up and you need to reconsider, some of you guys need to take a stand, say, well, maybe he's right, maybe we don't need to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Again, hey, let me, let me, let me make sure I reiterate it, because Roberts Rule, we've already voted on it by rule, unless council says to address it again, we're not gonna address it again, it's already been voted on, that's based on Roberts Rule. So, again, we'll move right along to item fifteen, is adjournment, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meetings, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign, we're adjourned, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, have a good evening.